All right, call the meeting to order. Good evening. Can we have a full call? Commissioner Ford?
Here.
Vice Chair Brady?
Here.
Chair Onains, I will mark his absent. Commissioner Moore, I was also show absent. And Commissioner Hancock?
Here.
Thank you. All right, so the Planning Commission and the City of Cattati would just like to acknowledge the tragic events that have happened in Vegas. Just our thoughts are really with the victims and I'd like all of us to just take a moment and have a brief moment of silence. Thank you. Thank you. All right, everyone get a chance to review the minutes from September 5th?
Yes. Got one correction.
Okay.
At the top of packet page five, the minutes page three, there's a sentence that I commented, expressed concern with how the city would handle customers of the buildings, tenants, and it's, I should say how the owner would handle customers of the buildings, tenants, because it's not a city parking lot.
Okay.
Did you find that? Okay, thanks. With that change, I'd move to approve.
I'll second.
Vote? Commissioner Ford?
Yes.
Vice Chair Brady?
Yes.
Chair Onains is absent, Commissioner Moore absent, and Commissioner Hancock.
Yes.
Thank you. Are there any changes to the agenda this evening?
Thank you, Madam Chair, no changes.
Okay. Okay, at this time I'd like to open up for public comment, so this is a time for people to come up to our podium here and speak to us about items that are not on the agenda for this evening. So I'll go ahead and do this right now. Okay, seeing none, I will go ahead and close so we can get to tonight's topics. Thank you. Okay, so matters at hand this evening. The first on our agenda is a consideration of a conditional use permit for a meeting facility and theater at 8492 Gravenstein Highway, Suite F. Resolution of the Planning Commission of the City of Cattati approving a conditional use permit to allow a meeting facility and theater at 8492 Gravenstein Highway, Suite F, P number 16/08. The will call is Robert Bouget, sorry if I said that name incorrectly. And the second item on our agenda is a commercial canvas land use regulations. We have reports by staff for topic one.
Thank you, Madam Chair. For the record, my name's John Paul Harries, I'm a planner with the City of Cattati. This is item F1, begins on page seven of your packet. And it's a consideration of a conditional use permit for the operation of a meeting facility/theater within Suite F at the Apple Valley Plaza. There's an image of the plaza and Suite F as outlined on page 13 of your packet. As well, the floor plan for the proposed use is on page 14 of your packet. The suite itself is 2,420 square feet and it exists within a 26,500 square foot retail center. The uses, both meeting facility and theater, are permissible within the CG, the Commercial Gravenstein zoning district, with a conditional use permit. So the applicant proposes to operate this facility primarily as a meeting facility to host faith-based meetings, Bible study type, addiction recovery meetings. And we expect most of those meetings would be between five and 25 people. Additionally, the applicant, and that component of it is the meeting facility part of it, additionally, the applicant wants to host larger events and these would be amplified music events, they would be, there's a stage in the facility. And comedians of that nature and motivational speakers of that nature as well. And we also expect that they will make the facility available for fundraising events, memorials and wedding receptions, that kind of thing. There's no alcohol proposed to be served in here and no food preparation, so simply a meeting facility. The primary issues that staff identified with it, once we were able to narrow down on what the use is, is were related to noise and parking availability, especially in relation to the size of the events that they could host. So let me refer you to the table on page 11 of your packet. This examines the parking and with this table is how I was able to kind of determine what event sizes would work at the Apple Valley Plaza. There's 120 parking spaces out there. If we considered the whole thing to be a retail center, we would allocate one space for every 300 square feet, that gets us right around about 101 parking spaces. So it's a little, has a little more extra parking than would be required for a retail center, but this use is a different use. It's not a traditional use that you would see in a retail center. And with these uncommon type of uses in a retail center, we look at the parking a little bit differently and get right down to the use. So in this case, if you look at the conditions of approval on page 19 of your packet, you'll see that we are recommending that the operation have basically three different breakdowns. The first one would be Monday through Friday, from 10:00 a.m. to 6:00 p.m., there's sufficient parking to host events for up to 24 people. On Saturday and Sunday, also between the hours of 10:00 a.m. and 6:00 p.m., there's capacity to host events that would allow up to 64 people. And then in the evenings, any evening, they could host up to 120 people at those events. We'll say that the fire marshal has reviewed the proposal and has put his own limit of 125 people, given the square footage of the space and the way the setup works. The other issue that we identified was the potential for noise violations. We do have, if you look at that photo on page 13, right behind that is a residential property and then that building has 697, that 697 was Cattati Avenue.
All right, call the meeting to order. Good evening. Can we have a full call? Commissioner Ford?
Here.
Vice Chair Brady?
Here.
Chair Onains, I will mark his absent. Commissioner Moore, I was also show absent. And Commissioner Hancock?
Here.
Thank you. All right, so the Planning Commission and the City of Kattati would just like to acknowledge the tragic events that have happened in Vegas. Just our thoughts are really with the victims and I'd like all of us to just take a moment and have a brief moment of silence. Thank you. Thank you. Everyone get a chance to review the minutes from September 5th?
Yes. Got one correction.
Okay.
At the top of packet page five, the minutes page three, there's a sentence that I commented, "Express concern with how the city would handle customers of the building's tenants." And it's, I should say, "how the owner would handle customers of the building's tenants" because it's not a city parking lot.
Okay.
Did you find that? Okay, thanks. With that change, I'd move to approve.
I'll second.
Vote? Commissioner Ford?
Yes.
Vice Chair Brady?
Yes.
Chair Onains is absent, Commissioner Moore absent, and Commissioner Hancock?
Yes.
Thank you. Are there any changes to the agenda this evening?
Thank you, Madam Chair, no changes.
Okay. Okay, at this time, I'd like to open up for a public comment. So this is a time for people to come up to our podium here and speak to us about items that are not on the agenda for this evening. So I'll go ahead and do this right now. Okay, seeing none, I will go ahead and close so we can get to tonight's topics. Thank you. Okay, so matters at hand this evening. The first on our agenda is a consideration of a conditional use permit for a meeting facility and theater at 8492 Gravenstein Highway, Suite F. Resolution of the Planning Commission of the City of Kattati approving a conditional use permit to allow a meeting facility and theater at 8492 Gravenstein Highway, Suite F, P number 16/08. The will call is Robert Bouget. Sorry if I said that name incorrectly. And the second item on our agenda is a commercial canvas land use regulations. We have reports by staff. For topic one.
Thank you, Madam Chair.
Thank you.
For the record, my name's John Paul Harries. I'm a planner with the City of Kattati. This is item F1, begins on page seven of your packet. And it's a consideration of a conditional use permit for the operation of a meeting facility/theater within Suite F at the Apple Valley Plaza. There's an image of the plaza and Suite F as outlined on page 13 of your packet. As well, the floor plan for the proposed use is on page 14 of your packet. The suite itself is 2,420 square feet and it exists within a 26,500 square foot retail center. The uses, both meeting facility and theater, are permissible within the CG, the Commercial Gravenstein zoning district, with a conditional use permit. So the applicant proposes to operate this facility primarily as a meeting facility to host faith-based meetings, Bible study type, addiction recovery meetings. And we expect most of those meetings would be between five and 25 people. Additionally, the applicant, and that component of it is the meeting facility, part of it. Additionally, the applicant wants to host larger events and these would be amplified music events, they would be, there's a stage in the facility. And comedians of that nature and motivational speakers of that nature as well. And we also expect that they will make the facility available for fundraising events, memorials, and wedding receptions, that kind of thing. There's no alcohol proposed to be served in here and no food preparation, so simply a meeting facility. The primary issues that staff identified with it, once we were able to narrow down on what the use is, is were related to noise and parking availability, especially in relation to the size of the events that they could host. So let me refer you to the table on page 11 of your packet. This examines the parking and with this table is how I was able to kind of determine what event sizes would work at the Apple Valley Plaza. There's 120 parking spaces out there. If we considered the whole thing to be a retail center, we would allocate one space for every 300 square feet. That gets us right around about 101 parking spaces. So it's a little, has a little more extra parking than would be required for a retail center. But this use is a different use. It's not a traditional use that you would see in a retail center. And with these uncommon type of uses in a retail center, we look at the parking a little bit differently and get right down to the use. So in this case, if you look at the conditions of approval on page 19 of your packet, you'll see that we are recommending that the operation have basically three different breakdowns. The first one would be Monday through Friday, from 10:00 a.m. to 6:00 p.m., there's sufficient parking to host events for up to 24 people. On Saturday and Sunday, also between the hours of 10:00 a.m. and 6:00 p.m., there's capacity to host events that would allow up to 64 people. And then in the evenings, any evening, they could host up to 120 people at those events. We'll say that the fire marshal has reviewed the proposal and has put his own limit of 125 people, given the square footage of the space and the way the setup works. The other issue that we identified was the potential for noise violations. We do have, if you look at that photo on page 13, right behind that is a residential property. And then that building that has 697, that's 697 West Kattati Avenue, that's a residence. So our code has noise limits for anything that would be measured at the residential property. And we've asked him to analyze the impacts of the noise. So he submitted a noise analysis prepared by a professional. And the measures, mitigation measures that were included at, are largely shown in the conditions of approval. There's a list of them. Now, just highlight them, what we're asking the applicant to do. The one is to close at 10:00 p.m. The application was a request to operate till 11:00. We're recommending closing at 10:00. And that's because the noise standard changes at 10 o'clock. It reduces by five decibels right at that time. And that's a reasonable time to end any kind of event. That comes from us. The noise consultant suggested that they monitor the noise to never exceed 90 decibels within the facility itself. If they were to keep that, according to the analysis, he wouldn't have to worry about the violation of a maximum 65 dBA at the residential property line. We are asking him to monitor both. The recommendation from the noise consultants was to measure the 90 dBA. We said, since you're going to be buying a noise meter, you can also measure at the property line to ensure you don't violate the 65 dBA, since that is our primary concern. Coupled with that is just sealing, sealing the event. The back door doesn't have weather stripping, so the noise penetrates through it. So all that has to be corrected and the doors have to be able to shut tightly. We don't, similar to what we're do, what we've conditioned down at the Billiards Place, there'd be no smoking or gathering behind the building to create a noise thing. And then the city, obviously, if we were to receive noise complaints, we would undertake monitoring ourselves at the expense of the property owner. And actually, I don't, I don't see the applicant here, so unfortunately, he's not able to answer any questions. And we've been working with him and his lawyer, and I don't see his lawyer here either. So perhaps I can answer any questions, but I think at this point, I'll finish my presentation and make myself available.
Okay, thank you. Questions? Yeah?
I'm a little unclear on the monitoring expectations. You said, since they're buying a monitor anyway, they can monitor both places. So does the monitor all amplified events mean continuously? In which case, you'd have permanently mounted monitors, one indoors and one at the property line?
No, these aren't permanently mounted monitors. You can purchase monitors that are handheld devices that you can program to record exactly how you want them to record. They can, in a short period of time, calculate either an average of sound, they can measure peak sound levels. It would not be, he would not be required to have permanent noise monitors.
Well, okay, permanent isn't the question. It's like for the duration of the amplified sound?
Yeah.
Like continuous monitoring whenever there's amplified sound? Is that the expectation? Or can he run out and do a spot check during the?
I think for us, for compliance with the condition, the spot checking would be adequate. And then after that, if it was a problem, then we would take on the monitoring. I don't think it's reasonable to ask them to be, because he's got to monitor what's happening inside the event, to ask them to be standing outside at that property line for the duration of the event.
Right.
So it would be, it would be spot checking in the practical sense.
I'm just a little, amplified music is not a continuous sound level. And so just the question of how you know you're there at the maximum sound level is the tricky part for me. If you're, I mean, it sounds like the city monitoring would only be triggered by complaints. Yeah, so I'm a little unsure how it's going to work. You run out and spot checked during the warm-up and it's not the loud part of the concert? That's all. You got any feedback on that? Pun not intended.
I don't, I'm not a noise expert because I don't want to, and so I don't want to misspeak. But the way I understand that the measurements were conducted is they run a white noise test up to a certain level. And then if that level, if you don't violate the standards with this test, and I think that's why he said, don't let the indoor levels get to exceed 90 dBA, because under this test, so I think you're able to set a standard. You can do a standard test, which should give you some level of assurance that you're not going to be violating the standard, provided you keep within those limits. I don't, I don't want to overspeak this. Let Vicki speak.
I would just add that we could add some clarifying language to the condition that said, that ensures the times that the spot checking needs to be done throughout a performance. So we could, you know, have it so that it's somehow defined, that it's mid-performance, that, you know, 10 minutes in, you know, an hour in, or something like that. Or we'd define it with, you know, not necessarily discrete time limits, but some language that clarifies that what we're looking for is the overall performance.
Right, it's a little tricky. I mean, another option would be to say a sound check during warm-up when you perform the loudest part of the concert and check it then, or something like that. I'm not sure how.
Well, from a technical point of view, it's usually identifying a peak period. You would actually say to do the measurements during the loudest period, the peak period of the measurement. Because I think that's, even if the sound exceeds, so depending on the sound averaging, it should probably be stated to do the measurement within the peak period of the sound.
Yeah, we're trying to capture that because it has both a maximum and it has an averaging, which is the LEQ, which is, as you're talking about, which is more of an average over a period of time, in this case, a one-hour period. I don't know how long a monitor actually has to record before it can give you the one-hour measure. They might be able to do that relatively quickly. I'm thinking about how we could adjust the condition of approval to capture Mr. Ford's complaint.
I've got a question and then a lead on to that one if I can. So have any of the neighbors been notified? Have the, has the neighborhood round there been notified?
Yeah, we notified everyone within 500 feet of the entire plaza area.
So, okay, so if the sound standards were to be exceeded by whatever measurement, by that there were complaints and that they were exceeded, what leverage would there be? How would the question, or what would the owner, you know, what could be done?
Well, first, we would look to see, has he complied with all the building things, like sealing the doors and operating with the doors closed? And, you know, first that. Then I think the next thing would be to reduce the inside levels. Maybe 90 would be too loud. If we found that there was violation, reduce the inside levels to 85 and then do some more, you know, periodic monitoring after that. But that would be the primary thing, is to reduce the levels. If he didn't comply, just, you know, just chose not to comply with it, then we would have to revoke the business license and the conditional use permit.
And I would add that not only if he chooses not to comply, but if it proves that the building just isn't soundproof enough to provide that, then those are also grounds for revocation of the use permit.
Would it be possible, and it's just sort of, I mean, making spot measurements is very, depends on the people doing it and where they're doing it. But if there was a series of complaints, would it be possible to require the installation of a permanent sound meter based on neighborhood complaints and determining that they were exceeding a level?
Doesn't seem like it.
I don't, I don't, I don't know the answer to that, simply because I don't know the delicate, delicacy or not of that, of those instruments. We could certainly explore that.
So I have looked into those instruments in the past for a number of things. And I mean, they come in a whole variety of ranges. So there's certainly very much, it would be, they could be installed and made available as a permanent, you know, nowadays, display, made accessible on the internet as to what the averaging would be. So it is a cost thing, so it's the exactation on, you know, what would be required on them. But I would think it might be possible to do that only if these measures weren't being met and if the neighbors were feeling that they were being, I mean, I know we've had downtown at times, some people there have felt that things have got very loud. So I think some sort of calibrated level of, yes, do your spot checks, but if the spot checks are not solving the problem, then to put in a permanent meter, a requirement, and make those results available to the public in a timely fashion.
Excuse me, I could add that recommendation as a condition of approval. It would be condition of approval eight, H. That would be to the fact that if these previous measures, A through G, failed, then the permanent noise meter shall be installed. And you added another part, have that data available?
Make that data available in a reasonable time to the public, because it'll be the neighbors that would be the ones being able to see what it is. Do you think that is a reasonable way of doing it? I mean, I think the instrumentation is improving to make it something that would be relatively easy to install. The calibrate, the management of it is, of course, is very, getting it calibrated would be another level. But I think at this point, it would be just really to say that, hey, if you're not going to listen to the neighbors and take action to, if the neighbors are feeling that it's too noisy, which we hope it won't be.
Are, would this, would, are you recommending a permanent installation or installation that provides monitoring through the entirety of the events?
The entirety of the event if it was a, if it was required as a permanent monitor. So if there was a, if the above measures failed, then to have a monitor installed that would measure for the entirety of the event.
Okay.
If they failed.
I'll just be honest, I don't even know if that's possible, so I feel a little bit uncomfortable adding that. And do you?
It feels to me like if we added, like, one of you suggested to A, just monitor all amplified events at peak noise level, or something like that, to A. And then to G, we could just add something like responsible for paying the costs of additional monitoring. It already says the cost of monitoring. We could say the cost of additional ongoing monitoring, as well as implementation of all measures necessary to mitigate. It feels like maybe we're covered enough without specifying something we're not sure of the technical feasibility of.
Well, it would only be if everything else fails.
I know, but we still don't know whether, sort of, I, yeah, that's true. You know more than we do about these monitors.
So yes, include Commissioner Hancock's recommendation. Well, we'll get to that when the motion comes, I guess.
Okay, we'll think on that one. I have one more question before I open up the public comment on this. I was a little on the conditions of approval on item, or number four, where it says the max number of persons. So I just want to make sure, I just want to ask a clarifying question on this. So the, so fire, I guess, came in, right? And they looked at it and they said the building capacity is 125 persons. But then during those times, we said, but we'll put a cap on it at this number based on parking? Okay.
Correct.
Okay. I have a different line of thinking, because I'm just wondering if like, because for a lot of these meetings or events, there's like other ways in which we can attend these events, right? Like public transportation, or like getting buses for events or meetings? So our shuttle service that the actual facility could offer? Go ahead, Vicki, sorry.
I was just going to say typically, our challenge for monitoring that is that staff is not typically around during the hours of events. So we may not, we would receive complaints if there was no parking available for patrons of the other businesses, but that's sort of too late for the health of the other businesses. So we can make it a condition. Certainly that it's actually the vehicle limitation and the building capacity limitation is up to the fire and building official occupancy number. It just may be that we'll have some follow-up code enforcement to do if they exceed that. Could be done.
Okay.
Can I just respond to that quickly? The parking, the occupancy as a calculation, parking is already fairly generous. It calculates four participants per car. So to my mind, it's already got built in. Some people aren't getting there in those cars. They're taking public transit or they're walking or something like that. Because I don't think four people come in every car to, at least, when I drive down the street, I don't see very many cars with four people in them. So I'm thinking to give even more capacity, more occupancy, more than 24 people for six parking spaces seems kind of rough to me. It's going to lead to over-parking, you know, no parking spaces.
You're saying this was too generous in what they gave, or too lenient?
I'm saying, I wouldn't, I wouldn't feel very comfortable going to higher maximum number of persons during the day when there are only, the calculation says there are only six spaces available for this use. 24 people is already fairly generous for six people. So going, allowing them to have more people than the six, than 24 seems a little dicey to me.
We have two things to ponder over, public comments. So I hope there's someone here to talk to us. All right. Any other questions before I open it up? Please, yeah?
I will say, to do an alternative, the numbers that come out are based on our code standards. They're, to do an alternative parking scenario, such as where they provided shuttles or transport, something like that, that analysis was not provided. It was never contemplated. And we would need to have really a robust plan before we would entertain that outside of our normal parking standards. And we simply don't have that with this application. So it's not something that staff, that we could do at this point.
Okay, any other question? Okay, I'll open it up for public comment now on this item? No? Okay. Seeing nothing, I'll go ahead and close. Thank you. All right, discussion? Anyone want to start us off? All two of you?
Well, for item eight, the noise item, I would propose we add the phrase, "at peak noise level" in the first line, 8A after events. Appropriate to monitor all amplified events at peak noise level. Or I guess it goes after the parenthetical comments, "feature music at peak noise level to ensure noise level, blah, blah, blah." And, sorry. And then in G, add the word "ongoing" before "monitoring" in the third to the last line. Cost of ongoing monitoring.
So when was that? City shall choose dates and times of monitoring, of ongoing monitoring?
I was thinking the next line down, paying for the costs of ongoing monitoring is.
Could you read that whole sentence? From the city shall choose, once you work it out.
8G?
Yeah, G. Okay, so. Okay, so, new, new way to rephrase that thing. So, sentence as is, with a comma at the end, as well as implementation of ongoing monitoring to, to ensure continued compliance.
Ongoing is continuous monitoring during events, ongoing monitoring?
No, I didn't say that, ongoing monitoring.
What does ongoing?
Means continues.
Okay.
So, the city will do the three days, and then the applicant is going to have to put in some monitoring.
Okay.
Going for whatever, whatever the city determines is necessary to ensure compliance.
As well as owner doing ongoing monitoring.
Right. So what it currently says, so then it would say, city shall choose dates and times of monitoring and applicant operator shall be responsible for paying the cost of monitoring as well as implementation of all measures necessary to mitigate noise levels to levels that are compliant with the land use code and implementation of ongoing monitoring to ensure continued compliance.
Thank you.
I'm good with that.
I'm good with that, too. How are you feeling on eight, each?
I'm fine with that, that was just a suggestion. I think the ongoing monitoring, it's just when there is a, I mean, we have had, there's big issues with noise in other parts of the town, and so it's just, if that was to come up, it's a very sticky issue as to how we actually reflect to the neighborhood what's going on. And so I, I think this will allow some continual monitoring, I think particularly the, the peak monitoring is important to specify that, and we'll just have to hope that the, the applicant and the operators are flexible on that. I, I have been to festivals where the, the applicant and the operator has said, what is this monitoring? You know, we just don't put the, don't bring it out. It wasn't anywhere near any residential areas, but.
Okay, that's good.
So I would just hope in this case that this is strong enough, and I'm good with that.
Okay, good. You have anything else? Anything else?
Nope.
Okay, I'll go back to mine. Okay, so, I just, I really, I mean, I, I just don't want to, I want to set up a business here as I come in and apply for use for, to like give them like their best shot of success. So I think that's the only thing, and I, I wish the applicant or the attorney were here tonight to be able to answer to some of these questions. So pending the decision of the planning commissioners this evening, is there any chance that they could have at like a future date, if they were to present with an option for a shuttle service or something like that, to give them greater capacity during those hours?
Well, sure, we could always consider amending the conditional use permit in the future if they wanted to change their operation to include shuttles and buses like that. Yeah, absolutely.
Okay, but not an option this evening because we don't have what we need?
Don't have the analysis required to make the findings on, on that issue.
Okay. Is that something that we educate an applicant on, or is that something that they ask for? When we go over like capacity in hours? Or they had this information, is that right?
I would, I would say that it's, it, it would typically come out during the discussions.
That comes out, okay.
Yeah, because they know based on the fire marshal and building official what their occupancy is. So if they were trying for numbers significantly greater than that, it would come out with the parking limitations.
I guess what I'm getting at, this won't be a surprise to them.
It will not be a surprise to them, no.
Okay.
No.
Okay. Okay.
Ready for a motion?
That's, that's it for me. Yeah, ready for a motion? Thank you.
I'd move to adopt Resolution PC 2017-7, approving a conditional use permit to allow a meeting facility and theater at 8492 Gravenstein Highway Suite F.
With the changes?
With, yes, with the changes to conditions of approval eight A and G.
Thank you.
Well, I'll second it.
Thank you. Commissioner Ford?
Yes.
Vice Chair Brady?
Yes.
Commissioner O'Nines is absent, Commissioner Moore absent, Commissioner Hancock?
Yes.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Okay.
I'm making.
Okay.
An exciting item.
Okay. We'll move on to our next matter at hand. So this is item F2, this is commercial cannabis land use regulations, and may we have the report by staff?
Yes.
Thank you.
Thank you, Madam Chair. I'm going to go back a little bit tonight into some of the legislative history. I'll try and keep it brief, but I also want to make sure each time that the public has the history of why we're here tonight, so just ask the commissioners to bear, bear with us a little bit, because I know a lot of you already know this information. And, and I will say, we have Chief Parish with us here tonight. He's here and available to answer any questions later on through the process that, that the three of you may have. So tonight, what we're looking at are sort of the critical pieces of what would be an ordinance to regulate any new cannabis uses in the city, any new commercial cannabis uses in the city. So I've pulled out what I think are the critical decision points of that ordinance, so types of licenses, limits on those licenses, where they can be located, and how they would be operated. And what we're hoping for tonight is some feedback from the commission and the public that would get out any of those topics that we need to discuss further, that sort of pull out the details of those. On, the plan is to then on October 24th, take the proposal together with the information we received tonight to the council, and the council would provide us with any additional direction that they have. And then through November and January, we would develop the ordinance and complete the sequel review for that ordinance. So we're really hoping to, to settle on some specific issues for sure by October 24th so that we can complete the sequel process. And then finally, if we did decide to allow additional cannabis uses, we would open up an application period to receive and evaluate the applications for any new allowable permits, and then complete the public process for issuing those new licenses. So here is the, the brief history that I wanted to go through, just going back to 1996 when the California voters passed Proposition 215, the Compassionate Use Act, which legalized medical use of cannabis, followed in 2003 by SB 420, the Medical Marijuana Program Act, which established guidelines allowed for collectives and created the state ID system. Then in 2015, the state legislature enacted the Medical Cannabis Regulation and Safety Act, which really began to establish a licensing framework for all of the various cannabis, commercial cannabis activities, cultivation, manufacture, sale, et cetera. Then in 2016, most recently, the California voters passed Proposition 64, which legalized the recreational use of cannabis by persons 21 and older. So that's, Prop 64 is commonly referred to as adult use. Some people also refer to it as recreational, so we've used those terms synonymously throughout. And then this year in 2017, the governor signed SB 94, referred to as the Budget Trailer Bill, which attempted to align the Medical Cannabis Regulation and Safety Act from 2015 with a licensing system for adult use, so that there was one coherent licensing system that aligned all of the requirements and the limits, et cetera. And so now we have this new acronym, MAU-CRA, Maruska, or however you choose to pronounce it. So that's where we are right now. The state, well, let me go forward a little bit. With the state regulations, they had, the, the various agencies that are involved had developed their licensing and their regulations and published those this last May for public review, just about the time that the trailer bill was coming along trying to add adult use. And so the state agencies have been scrambling to align those and come up with a, the, a system of regulations which encapsulates both use programs. And so just last week, they announced that they're probably not going to be able to complete their formal rulemaking process, so their plan is to issue temporary 90-day licenses beginning January 1st. So what will happen is that our urgency ordinances will remain in effect until our local regulations are adopted, and so that, right after the first of the year, we'll be dealing with several different deadlines if we choose to, to enact, to allow for more uses, more commercial uses. Again, this, I think, is probably repeat, repeating.
Can you ask me a question?
Can you tell me what, what you mean by our urgency ordinances?
Uh, yeah, the, the city council passed and extended at this point a couple of urgency ordinances which just set in place what we currently allow, so that if our, so if any jurisdictions' local regulations were not in place by January 1st, it just affirmed to the state that we're either working on them or we're not allowing them, that this is where we're at with it. Just to summarize for folks, some of the, the most important aspects of Prop 64, the adult use regulations, it legalized adult recreational cannabis use, of course, people 21 and older. Adults may possess up to one ounce of marijuana or eight grams of concentrated marijuana. Individuals are now permitted to grow up to six plants in a private home without violating any local laws, and the city cannot disallow that cultivation of the personal six plants. As I said, it designated state agencies to license and regulate activities. It imposed a state excise tax of 15% on retail sales cultivation taxes as well. It exempted medical marijuana from sales tax so long as the, the patient or the purchaser had a government-issued medical ID card, and authorized local governments to regulate and tax cannabis uses. And so though the commission wasn't directly involved in the tax, I know you're all aware that the council did vote to place a tax measure on the ballot for this November, that went ahead forward, forward of the land use regulation simply so that we could have, meet all the deadlines for getting it on the ballot. So if we do choose to expand the set of cannabis uses, the tax measure, if it passes, would allow us to tax them. And then, I think we've said all we need to say about the trailer bill. Came late, everybody's scrambling. One thing to, to, that will be relevant to tonight is that licensees are now going to be issued specific type A adult use or type M medicinal use licenses. They can hold both, but they would be required to get one of each. And so in tonight's set of regulations, we've, I've considered that to be a state licensing artifact, not necessarily the way we would impose our limits. For us, I think it's more location specific and operator specific regardless of the particular type of license, but that's certainly something that we can discuss tonight. And the other, I guess, significant part of SB 94 was it, it did allow for the vertical integration of license types. So with the exception of testing labs, licensees can hold multiple licenses, they just can't test and guarantee their own products. That's why the testing license is separate. Okay, for this next portion, I just want to direct everybody to the license types handout. We've put some on the dais for the commissioners and there are some in the back. So we'll be referring to license types throughout the discussion, so that might be helpful. So what, what is in the, the informational materials tonight? The staff proposal on commercial uses. We've proposed a maximum of two retail cannabis dispensaries, the type 10 license, and again, not making a distinction here between adult use or medicinal use, just saying two dispensaries would be allowed, so that's one more in addition to the one that we already have. We've recommended that the type 12, which is the microbusiness, and that is a combination license that allows for retail sales as well as cultivation of less than 10,000 square feet, and the ability to act as a licensed distributor and level one manufacturer. So there's quite a few activities going on there, but all in a smaller scale than, than individual licenses issued for those separate activities. And so we put those, combined those with retail because we thought that was the, the most problematic, the retail activity was the most potentially problematic, where you just have public on-site, it brings up the other issues of parking and nuisances. So that is why we've combined them in the retail use. We've suggested that the retail dispensaries be allowed only in the Gravenstein corridor. Currently, the dispenser, a dispensary could theoretically be allowed in the, in the, in any of the three commercial zones, so, or actually, I should say two commercial zones because they're not allowed downtown in the specific plan. And they could be theoretically allowed in East Cotati, although it would be hard to find a location that would actually accommodate it. With the proposal that's in front of you tonight, we're suggesting that that be changed to only allow them to locate in the Gravenstein corridor, and that recommendation primarily is to not introduce the activity into already established residential areas. The hours of operation is set in the regulations before you are the same as the current dispensary, Monday through Saturday, 10 to 7, and Sunday, 12 to 5. We've had some public comment on some of these items, which I'll go through at the end. And also, we're recommending, had recommended that the public dispensing area, so none of the associated activity areas, so not office administration, not educational facilities, not packaging, but simply the public dispensing area be increased from 800 square feet to 1,000 square feet. And then just to point out that the retail licenses issued by the state do allow for delivery services, so, so separate from distribution. Distribution is more of what you would, what traditional distribution is, wholesaler to wholesaler, licensee to licensee, not to end retailer. So delivery is to an end user. On the cultivation side, we've recommended that a, there be a maximum of five indoor cultivation permits allowed, so no outdoor or mixed light cultivation. That would give us the license types of 2A, 3A, or 4, and the difference in the 2, 3, and 4 have to do with size of the canopy. And the reason that we have made that recommendation is we felt like outdoor cultivation and mixed light cultivation, which are typically, which is typically done in a greenhouse, would be more appropriate for a county jurisdiction and not necessarily appropriate for city. They're harder for us to inspect and, and regulate, and we felt a little They're harder for us to inspect and regulate, and we felt a little harder to keep security measures in place. So, we're recommending only indoor cultivation. For those five indoor sites, we've recommended that they be allowed only in the commercial-industrial or general industrial zones. So, those are the industrial zones that the commission is aware of, north of Hellman Drive, just up to the border of Roanoke Park, all east of Redwood Drive. For manufacturing, we're recommending a maximum of five manufacturing or testing permits. I think there's good discussion to be had there as to whether testing needs to be included in the manufacturing. I think that's a good topic for us to discuss tonight. So, maximum of five of those, as well as one standalone distribution license type, the type 11. From what we have read and from other regulations that we've reviewed, it appears that distribution happens primarily with a manufacturing use. So, I don't know that there's that many possibilities out there for a standalone distribution type. Certainly, the distribution in conjunction with manufacturing would make more sense for us. It's easier for us to monitor and regulate. The type 7 license, which is the manufacturing license that allows for volatile, the use of volatile solvents, would require a use permit under the regulations before you tonight. And that recommendation is based on the cutoff that our other permit systems require. So, light manufacturing can go in by right. If it uses any kind of hazardous materials, it's a use permit. So, this recommendation is just consistent with the rest of our land use tables and process. On the personal and caregiver cultivation side, again, this is, the city is limited with those adult-use or recreational plants that are allowed by the state. What we are recommending is that that cultivation occur indoors. The slide here says within the residence, but it could also be within a permanent accessory structure. But all indoors. As well, the personal cultivation by a primary caregiver for other qualified patients, so that's still allowed under the licensing system, that there can be a single caregiver who cultivates on behalf of other qualified patients. Without needing a state license, they can cultivate up to 30 plants, so six plants for each of the five qualifying patients. That feels like a little high of a plant count on residential parcels, so I think that's also a good topic for discussion tonight. Our legal, our city attorney has told us that we, that this whole area of the law is still evolving, and it's probably going to have to shake out a little bit over time. But bottom line is, we probably could also ban it. We could also require it to be indoors, and alternatively, we could allow it to occur outdoors. The primary impacts, I think, for patients would be the indoors, because of the way the regulations are written, that the building has to be permanent, has to be lockable, has to be equipped with ventilation and upgraded energy, upgraded electrical panels. There is definitely some cost associated with requiring that to be indoors. The regulations assume that we are developing two new permit types. One is an administrative cannabis permit, and the administrative permit would be issued to personal and caregiver cultivators. And that permit is basically a tool used to educate people as to how they need to grow it, where they can grow it, what the city standards are for potential nuisance impacts, and as it's structured, would result in an inspection by police, fire, building, and planning to ensure that it was compatible with all the requirements prior to issuing of the permit. The personal and caregiver cultivation is not taxed under the ordinance that will be before the voters. So, we're proposing that we develop a reasonable fee to cover city expenses to do that permit review and inspections, keeping in mind that that should just be as low as needed. And it's not a revenue generation fee, it's just to recover costs. The other permit that we would be developing is for commercial operators, and that one is proposed to aptly be named Commercial Cannabis Permit. And as structured, it would require a biannual review, which is similar to what the current dispensary does. The current dispensary has a license that is issued every two years, renewed every two years. So, that review would be against the business plan that was submitted for the particular location, as well as compliance with the ordinance and the permit standards. The first set of cannabis permits that would be issued, as well as the subsequent approvals, so that every biannual review approval is proposed to be issued by the city council. Other parts of the permit that we may want to discuss tonight, for the manufacturing uses, we did not propose separation requirements. We took a look at those, the numbers. The five cultivation and five manufacturing sites combined, they're about 15 and 1/2% of overall business properties, about 17% of the properties over 5,000 square feet. So, we were trying to, that was the basis of the limits, was just trying to find something that gave operators a space to locate in, and hopefully resulted in some improvements, permanent improvements to property, but did not overwhelm the business park by any one particular industry. So, those are the basic metrics of those numbers in the business park. The other thing that can happen when you have a separation requirement in a business park that's as small as ours is that you can unfairly advantage or unfairly disadvantage individual properties. So, we were trying to stay away from that by just having one number that floats around sites throughout the life of the permits permitting system. As I mentioned, we are proposing use permits for facilities using volatile solvents. Those use permits would be based on the volatile or hazardous materials and not necessarily the cannabis uses. So, we purposely did not propose that the cannabis use piece of any individual application have a use permit. And the reason for that is that use permits run with the land, and so, they would become attached to individual properties and not be able to float. Certainly, we could have a time limit on the use permits, we could force them to sunset. But with the biannual review, we didn't see that both of those were necessary. It seemed one or the other. And then, again, we propose that a reasonable fee or deposit for, to cover processing of the applications, city inspections, excuse me, for processing. The actual city inspections over the life of the permits, in this case, would be covered by the cannabis business tax if approved by the voters. I do want to call attention to a couple of public comments that we've received thus far. One suggestion was that generally, the cannabis permits, the two-year renewal be kept for the cannabis permits, but allow those to be extended administratively if the operations have been compliant for the past period. So, rather than them having to go through the public meeting process with the council, that staff do their typical evaluation for compliance, and then if all the boxes could be checked, that that be an administrative approval. There's also a request to expand the public dispensary space from, and I should back up on the renewal. From a staff perspective, we, with our experience with the dispensary, has been that dispensary ordinance is pretty tightly written, and the standards are pretty clear. So, it is fairly easy to, at a staff level, to check and make that recommendation. So, if the commission's looking for that feedback. They're jumping now to dispensaries. There was a suggestion to expand the public dispensary space to 2,000 square feet. So, as I mentioned a few minutes ago, it's currently 800 square feet. Staff made a recommendation that it go up to 1,000, and we have a public comment that that be expanded to 2,000 per dispensary. So, again, not the office areas, administration areas, or packaging areas, shipping or receiving, but simply the area where the public is receiving cannabis products. Also, a request to remove the patient cap for medicinal dispensaries. The current ordinance caps out at 1,100 active patients per month. And finally, to extend Sunday operating hours to 7:00 PM, consistent with what is allowed during the weekday. And finally, I just do want to make a, call the commission's attention to a couple of corrections that need to be made. Page 45 of the packet, I had a typo in there where I have a discrepancy between the written number and the numerical number. So, it should be, a cannabis dispensary should not be established within 600 feet, not 200 as it's written out. That's at the bottom of page 45. Also, page 47 and 48, one, page 47 of that, I apologize for this, we developed these over quite a long time period, so as we evolved, we have some.
Could you just go back to what was the previous correction on page 45?
Yes. At the very bottom of the page, on issue, or I'm sorry, item J5, the way it reads is a cannabis dispensary shall not be established within 200 feet, and then I have in parentheses the numeral 600. The text should read 6. Yes. And then, page 47 and 48, page 47 assumes that cannabis use on-site, so cannabis consumption, could be implemented as a condition of approval to a permit. And page 48, in reference to signage that should be posted at dispensaries, does not allow onsite consumption under any circumstance. So, page 48, the prohibition on consumption on-site is out of our current dispensary ordinance. That's what the rule is today. And then, I, there was some confusion from some members of the public about whether the type 12 licensed micro-business counts as one of the two allowed dispensaries, and whether or not it allows for delivery. So, my intention was that, yes, the type 12 counts as one of the two, and yes, it allows for delivery, simply because it is a retail dispensary. So, barring any change that the commission would like to see in that, I would make those clarifications in the future versions.
Can I ask about the signage one, backing up one?
Sure.
Which one is right? Are you proposing to take out 16B?
I'm sorry, yeah, I wasn't clear about that. I was proposing, what I should have put before you was that consumption on-site would not be allowed under any circumstance. After speaking with a member of the public, that could be allowed if the commission and the council decided to go that way. So, I think it's a worthy topic for tonight.
And where is the language in which it's allowed? Is that on 47?
That, yes, is page 47.
Oh, 9, I see, okay.
Yes, thank you. And then, are you actually talking about, is it on page 49, 16B? Yeah, okay. Yes, 49, 16B is in boy. So, those are kind of the, quote-unquote, guts of the ordinance and the issues as staff sees them. And again, what we're looking for tonight is public input on the drafts and commission feedback as well. And we're happy to answer any questions that you have.
Thank you.
Go ahead.
I've got some technical questions. So, do the manufacturing permits allow distribution? Like, is that built into a manufacturing license?
They, it's not built in, in the sense that it's, it requires a separate license to do it, but they can, a licensee could hold both.
And so, so those, I don't remember whether it was three or four allowed manufacturing licenses, manufacturing or testing licenses, those people could also hold a type 11 distribution license without violating your quotas?
The manufacturing facilities could, but not the testing facilities. Yes.
Okay. And the type 12 license, so the brief description is cultivation on an area less than 10,000 square feet and to act as a licensed distributor. Does that just mean of their products? Or is that as open as a type 11 license?
That's a good question for us to clarify. I believe it's probably full distributor privileges.
And then, and then that probably also applies to the retailer. They can retail any product, not just theirs.
Correct.
Because the micro-business designation kind of makes it sound like a mom-and-pop grow, sell operation, but if it's really just a you-can-do-it-all license, that's a little different.
Yes, it is kind of the, sort of from seed all the way to end-user type license on a smaller scale, if you consider 10,000 square feet a smaller scale.
But if the distributor, manufacturer, and retailer license are not limited to their own product, then that's a much bigger license than any other one on the sheet.
In that case, the limiter there would be on the size of the physical facility. As it's proposed, again, that's one of, it's one of the reasons why we didn't suggest that that type go into the business park, because some of those building footprints are as large as 40,000 square feet. Not many of them, but those are out there. So, of the physical facilities that we have in, that are currently built, there's really only one where a micro-business could locate. It's also the reason that it is suggested to have a use permit.
Okay, yeah, that license I'd like clarification on, because as I read, the brief description, which I know is not the legal description, cultivation on an area less than 10,000 square feet, you could then have a 20,000-square-foot manufacturing facility and another, you know, have 40 trucks for your distribution and a thousand. and a thousand, 1,000-square-feet dispensary.
Yeah, yes, you could. It, you couldn't do it currently today with any of our existing buildings in that zone. But certainly in the future, if something were to be built and go through a use permit process, all of those sizes could be envisioned for sure.
Questions?
Yes, thank you. So I just wondering if you can explain why the proliferation of license types, A, B, and C? And it's, you've got them across all the range. So there's a type 1, and type 1A, type 1B, and type 1C, and the same.
Why did I list them all?
Why does, are those, those are individual license types? That would be the mutually exclusive? Or why the proliferation?
The, this is just a typical format for the way land use regulations would be set up. So it's mostly for clarity where we call out every potential state license, but indicate that it's, it's either not allowed, permitted through the cannabis permit, or allowed through use permit. So it's, alternatively, we could only list the ones that we decide to allow. It's just easier, I think, more user-friendly if we list every single one of the state licenses so that it's clear that it's either allowed or not allowed.
Okay, so it's modeling on the state, it's following on from the state license?
Correct, yes.
So the, the other question on there is, there's the reference to square feet of canopy. And how is that reference to, is that, just what does that mean? Or how's that determined? What, I know it's square feet, but then if you've got a round plant. But anyway, what does it mean? Square feet of canopy?
Yeah, it's, it's the, it is sort of the, if you were thinking of it as plan view or overhead bird's-eye view of the cultivation area. So it's the, as it is with trees, it's sort of the full foliage, extent of the full foliage. So just roughly in the materials that the state has put out, they, depending on maturity and depending on particular strain of plant, they say that a particular plant takes from 1 to 15 square feet of cultivation area. So it's really just trying to get at a reasonable square footage that would encapsulate the entire crop, if you will.
So it's a follow-on again from the state requirements? Or the state way of?
The use of canopy is, so we've used the same metrics for issuing the license that the state has for that, for those particular issues, yes. So that the license types more close, are aligned.
Thank you.
Okay, thank you. I just want to go over and make sure I captured everything we're supposed to review. Okay, so main things that I got were testing. And then I think the types were like type 7 and type 11 specifically. Okay. And fees, that I have the caregiver, commercial, manufacturing, and then a discussion on the use on property being prohibited. Did I miss other big ones? I'm sure I did.
To clarify that, one, it would be a type 8 testing facility and an 11. 7 is the volatile solvents type license.
Okay, so type 8 and 11.
Type 8 is the testing, 11 is distribution, yes. Yes, I think we could certainly add to that the issues that came up from public comment. So the size of the public dispensing area. The patient cap removal, the operating hours. Those are all topics that we could discuss that came up from the public. But certainly for, for us at a staff level, for developing the ordinance, it would be, do we agree that these license types are appropriate for our city? Do we agree that they're best suited in these locations? And do we agree that the use permit threshold is placed at the proper threshold? I would add that to it.
What was the last one?
Oh, the use permit requirement.
You mean for type 7 license, or?
For type 7 and the microbusiness. And for that, I'm, I'm referring to the chart at the, toward the end.
Oh, okay, yeah.
Can I ask one more question?
Please.
What's the rationale for limiting distributor permits to just one?
The, because we assumed that the manufacturers, the five manufacturers may also have distribution permits. So it allowed for each of the manufacturing businesses to also do distribution because that seems how the industry works. But the standalone distribution license would also allow for, you know, an Amazon-type facility, not that large, of course, but you know what I mean? Where it's just shipping in and shipping out.
I guess I still don't see what the rationale is for limiting it to one. What if two people want to open Amazon of cannabis?
Right. Strictly trying to get at what a cap for our business park seemed appropriate. So there is certainly nothing magic about the one. It was just trying to get in an overall number.
Okay, thank you. Okay, I'm going to open up now for public comment on this topic, item F2.
Good evening, Chair and Commissioner's staff. My name's Craig Litwin. I'm with 421 Group, cannabis consultant. I've served eight years in this field in California, up and down the state, working on best practices, best regulations. And I've been working with Brandon, Mercy Wellness, as far as helping to develop the best regs we can here in Cotati. So thank you for, those of you who've had, made time to meet with me, and happy to meet with you as this goes forward. It's a quickly evolving industry. Some points here, I'm going to jam through them in the short timeframe. 2,000 square feet or more for retail space is critical. The 800 feet existing, the 1,000 is insufficient. I don't even see a reason to put a limit on it. The bigger the space, the faster people can move through, the less time they take at parking, and it serves more patients or customers faster. Sunday hours for the dispensary from 10 to 7 seem very realistic. It's a relic of a rule. There was a church that used to be by Mercy Wellness, and they wanted to have an hour break before they got out of their service, before they opened. So that's why it was stuck at noon. There is no church there now. And just two sections down on the timing, it talks about how delivery is allowed between those same hours. I think you can look at setting back the dispensaries 1,000 feet. That seems to be the standard that we're seeing in a lot of cities and counties versus the 600. My next point is to support the two-year renewal administratively. I think that is a good point. It's a way to speed up everything and spend less time as a city and for those applying, for those who are doing it right. I do think that outdoor cultivation for patients is better than mandating indoor. And this is my personal belief that a registration is not advisable. It takes a lot of extra time. The citizens have spoken by passing Prop 64. Moving down, allowing onsite consumption is important. It is something, cannabis is something that you use often with other people. To have it, you know, in a regulated format and a safe setting is, you know, we can do that with bars. Certainly cannabis is not as dangerous as alcohol. People don't get as violent typically. And so it's something that you already have regulations in place, and I would encourage you to embrace that instead of turning a blind eye. I think the patient cap renewal is missing from this draft ordinance, unless I missed that. But if it is still in this draft ordinance, I strongly urge you eliminate it. Santa Rosa did the same. I think it's an arbitrary rule. There is a distributor, a second distributor, that would be the micro license as well. That would be that second distributor. And my time is up, so I will submit additional thoughts in writing or send emails or give calls.
Good evening, to those of you who don't know me, I'm Brandon from Mercy Wellness. I don't want to echo too many of the things that he's already brought up. But I do want to emphasize on the square footage. This space here is probably about 1,600 square feet or so. Picture about half of that. That's, that's what our showroom floor is. When you're in there, when we're giving tours, you got people coming in in wheelchairs. You guys, people will be standing there. You got people in line. You got the access for the employees. So there's not a lot of space when we're working in that in 800 square feet. So, I mean, we definitely would love to have more than 200 additional feet. He pretty much said most of the comments that I was going to say. I'd love to invite those of you that haven't been on a tour to come, take a look, see what that 800 square feet looks like, and then maybe make your decision after that. So if you have any questions, do feel free to reach out to me or Craig or any of our team. Thank you.
Anyone else? Okay, I'll go ahead and close public comment.
I'm, I'm okay with the lifting the square footage higher. I mean, where exactly? I, you know, I, I think we've had a start at some of the regulations, and I think it's, I mean, I see trying to make it less complex in some, as much as possible. I don't have a problem at all with the increasing to 7:00 PM on Sunday. The personal outdoor growth, I sort of think it would be sensible. And I don't understand the full issues here, but of at least understanding that indoor is causing energy consumption. And so where that limit is, I don't know. But, and certainly what the chief thinks of outdoor. I certainly think it's, it's a good thing. So I think eliminating the patient cap is also, or at least raising that. I'm not too sure where that patient cap, the reason for that is. It seems like if the business gets very successful, they'll have to move elsewhere as well to be able to cope with it. So that would be my input. I'm pretty, pretty okay with that. I think the other questions, we can come back to. Certainly, I did take a tour of the manufacturing facility that was on offer, and making the, using the volatile solvents should be a use permit because that is something that needs to be carefully managed and go through a process. It's a little bit complex, this whole document. So I, I mean, wherever it can be simplified, I'm happy to see that, but it's good to see it written down.
I was curious whether Chief Parish had any comments on size of the dispensary floor? Whether the police department has any concerns about security with a larger space?
I do not have a problem with expanding the dispensary. I don't think it has any bearing on the, the security. It could have an impact on parking if it got, you know, too occupied. I do have opinions on outdoor grows, though, if you guys are interested in hearing that at some point.
On, on what, outdoor grows?
Yes.
Yeah. Okay, what do you think about outdoor grows? Is that for questions?
I, I do not like outdoor grows, and I certainly don't like outdoor grows in neighborhoods. I would not like to see any type of outdoor grow in a residential area for a lot of reasons. For example, like right now is the cultivation time. We get an uptick in prowlers looking for grows outside. We've had home invasion robberies. You know, this county's had a lot of homicides behind outdoor grows in general. And I would say the majority of homicides are part of this industry. So I'm looking at a NICSIL that ironically came today. So NICSIL is a communications that, that agents, public agencies put out. This one's from the sheriff's office. And it doesn't have to be a large outdoor grow. So this NICSIL came out today, and this occurred on September 27th, which was last Wednesday. And this happened in Hillsburg. It was county area of Hillsburg. There was a home invasion robbery. Person was armed, and there were, and the quote from the sheriff's office, "some marijuana plants growing in the backyard." Victims were tied up, things were stolen. It attracts crime. Outdoor grows attract crime. So with the Proposition 64, somebody's allowed to grow six indoor plants, and the city can't regulate that. If you do, if you do the math, indoor grows, it's not one crop a year like an outdoor crop. You can do three or four crops. It's like, you can grow like 20 plants a year. And that's a lot of cannabis. So those are my thoughts on outdoor grows.
Thank you.
Should I keep going?
Yeah, go, go ahead.
I don't have any problem with increasing the dispensary size somewhat. I would, I would rather not sort of lift all regulations at once. It's harder to pull back than, than to open up later. So I'm a little reluctant to go with no cap. I'm, I guess another question for staff is what other jurisdictions locally are, are landing on? Whether we're going with restrictions on sizes? I, I actually don't want to open up the superstore of cannabis in Cotati and be the destination spot for the county. So, so I'm, I'm still kind of going back and forth on that one. I'm fine with the two-year administrative renewal. I don't think City Council needs to see every renewal for a, for a two-year license that's coming up, that's going well. I'm, I'm persuaded by Chief Parish at this point that restricting, that banning outdoor grows for now is the more prudent course. I'm, I have concerns about energy consumption, and I would be interested in proposals for the mixed light kind of grows that might be able to maintain the security that, that indoor grow provides, but still be able to. I, I'm not sure if that's possible. But down the line, the patient cap, I don't see a, a real rationale for the patient cap, I don't think. So I'd, I'd be okay with lifting that. Although I guess there's the, as, as long as we're sort of in step with other jurisdictions so we're not setting ourselves up as the, the only jurisdiction around that's going to have dispensaries.
If it's helpful, I could interject some information about that. So far, the only jurisdiction that has allowed for additional uses and have their ordinances in place is Cloverdale. I should say Santa Rosa and Cloverdale. Sebastopol is working on theirs, but they don't have a draft available yet. And Petaluma, I think, is back, they're exploring options. They had originally thought they would ban, and now they're potentially exploring. Hillsburg, Windsor. Hillsburg, Windsor, Roanoke Park have all decided to continue bans, and so it more than likely will get down, for dispensaries especially, I would imagine it's going to be county, City of Santa Rosa, City of Cloverdale, Cotati and Sebastopol. Don't have any idea on Petaluma yet. I would imagine that their emphasis might be on manufacturing and distribution facilities more than retail, but that's just a guess. I do believe, I know that Cloverdale does not have a size cap or a patient cap on their dispensaries. I don't believe that Santa Rosa does, but I couldn't say for sure on that. I'd have to double check. Our patient cap, the commission probably recalls, we were one of the first jurisdictions that did allow for medicinal dispensaries, and so I think we were, you know, stepping into it slowly as we went. And the original cap was 1,000 patients, and then when we amended the ordinance in 2011, we allowed, the council voted to allow a 10% increase on that, and so that's how we got to 1,100. That 1,000-patient original, I believe, was just what people felt comfortable with. I've not seen anything in the administrative record that tied it to something particular to a location such as parking or anything like that. It just seemed like that was what folks were comfortable with.
Did you address the operational hours for Sunday?
Oh yeah, I'd be perfectly comfortable with 10 to 7, 7 days. I don't see any reason to, yeah.
Okay. I feel like we're making progress, at least on, operational hours seem, that seems okay. Was that, was that okay? I remember the church being there, I remember that discussion years ago, too. So, was there any other reason that we had the different hours on there?
Not that I could find in the record.
Okay.
So, I think the, keeping it consistent for all of the operating days would be, staff would have no problem with that.
And then I think the, I think that admin-only renewal, if, of the permit, if there's like, you know, no concerns or anything that comes up, seems, I think that seems really reasonable. I don't think there should be like an extra or additional process to go through the public meeting process for it. So I think we also need to be in agreement on that piece as well. Patient cap, that seems fine.
I'd be fine to remove the patient cap.
Okay, me too. Square footage?
Well, I guess absent any rationale for it, I'm okay to let it go. I haven't heard any arguments for why a square foot cap is important.
It would seem, you know, just from the point of view of not being the big, the big, big place there to have a cap on that, and especially as there isn't a patient cap. So, I mean, at the moment, 1,000 square feet, and I certainly, you know, you look at this room at 1,600 square feet, 40 by 40, somewhere up around there as would allow the business to grow. I'm comfortable with 2,000 square feet. I think it's valuable to keep something in there at the moment, to see how it, more on that discussion that you had earlier, it's easier to keep it in, or at least than to bring it back later on. So, I feel comfortable with 1,600 to 2,000.
Yeah, I'd agree with that.
Okay. I don't know if I find it entirely necessary, so I'm okay, I'm okay at 2,000, but I'm...
I mean, I do have some concerns about, I know it's far-fetched, but I really don't want the Walmart of cannabis to end up here, and so I think having a store size, that's the only rationale that I've seen for a limit. And it sounded like that a 2,000-square-foot limit would kind of meet current demands, and we could always revisit it later.
Okay. Okay. 2,000?
I'm good with 2,000.
Okay. Do you want to do the use? Yeah. Use on property. Do you have any thoughts on that one? Chief?
I would just say that I've never seen that or experienced that in any other jurisdiction, and not sure it's lawful.
Director Parker, have you heard from any other jurisdictions? Is anybody contemplating allowing onsite use? It feels like a completely different business to me. It's the difference between bars and liquor stores, and so that's what worries me about just throwing it in.
I agree, that, to me, it feels like two different types of businesses as well. I don't know if anyone else, no one else is allowing it that I know of, but I can certainly check and double-check that specifically. The, we would, we would have to run it through also our general smoking regulations that we've adopted, but I agree, they're different businesses.
Yeah, that's a good point. The smoking regulations are pretty restrictive, aren't they? 25 feet from every door and window, et cetera?
Businesses can't, well, actually JP's the expert on smoking, whether he wants to be or not.
What's that supposed to mean?
He had to develop that ordinance. Just a question for you. Could it be an indoor smoking area at a business? I don't know that it could be.
I have to say I don't think so, because the way I understand the law is you can't smoke marijuana where smoking tobacco is illegal, and workplace safety laws prevent smoking indoors, so, you know, I can't think of an exception. I don't know how some of these hookah bars work, or, you know, those type of things.
We can certainly look into that more. We can certainly get some clarification for all of us before we take it on to council on that issue, so we wanted to say that the commission didn't have an opinion on that, because we need to develop it more fully we can.
Okay. I see there's things in the audience as well, but there might, I'm going to keep going for a little bit, because I think there might be other things that come up, and then I'll do another round of public comment, and then we'll come back, so, because I'm guessing there's going to be other things.
Can I just comment?
Yeah, please.
In my case, anyway, it's not accurate to say I don't have an opinion, absent a smoking ordinance. I think that the issues of the business being really a different business still raise concern to me, even if, even if it was possible to have a smoking area inside.
Okay.
And of course, if you're the governor, you could put up a tent outside, 25 feet from the door.
Okay, so I'm going to just like put a pin in that one. Let's keep going on some of these. Let's see, I have, I want to talk about the different types. You have something you wanted to do?
Nope, I think they were adequately explained.
Okay, so we have, did you already share some of this that I missed? Sorry. On testing?
I'm not sure what the question is, though. I mean, oh, whether they should be lumped in with the manufacturing?
Yeah.
I guess that was the question.
Testing type 8 and on distribution on type 11. Can you refresh me?
Sure. The way, the way the regulations are structured, the, all of the manufacturing facilities could also have a distribution license, the type 11 license under the current draft. Testing laboratories would always be separate because of the way the state regulations are written, but they are included in the total cap of five. So if we had two testing facilities, we would only be able to have three other manufacturing or distribution facilities.
Well, manufacturing, or manufacturing and distribution, right? You said the one standalone distribution is separate from the pool of five, right? Or would that count against the five as well?
It would not count against the five, so only the standalone one would count.
Okay.
If it helps, I would, I think about it as how many locations in the city and how many operators, so if someone is in a location and they're doing manufacturing and distribution, that's less of a separate compliance check and inspection process for us, so that was the logic.
So, so it's important to know that, I mean, there's the benefit in having those three different varieties on the testing. Just being in manufacturing myself in the past, you know, testing performs a different function, and that's valuable for generally validating a product. So, having the testing facility as a separate, or testing function as a separate license that they have to live up to is a valuable public. And, you know, we want to separate out the manufacturing non-volatile or no solvents, and having volatile solvent, so I think that's very clear.
If it's helpful for this discussion, the commission may want to look at packet page 50. That's where I set the limits for those different permit types.
So on page 50, you list six and seven and eight separately, rather than as one pool of five? And I know we're at an early phase, that could go either way. I don't, I don't have any preference one way or the other.
I don't hear any public comment on it, so I feel reasonably happy with the setup, and knowing how it's worked in the past, things can change if need be.
Right. I guess the version you had in the PowerPoint was just a little more flexible, five for type six, seven, and eight combined, rather than three for six and seven, and two for eight. And it seems like it makes a little more sense to just have a pool of five.
You think we can reword that differently in here?
Well, we're not, at this point, we're not really wordsmithing, because...
We could just recommend to council.
Yeah, right. Staff will sort of take this all to council, and then the final version, will the final version come to us before council, or just go straight to council?
It will come to you.
It's your recommendation, really, look at it. I think that's the way of saying it, yeah.
Yeah.
Yeah, I mean, it makes, it makes sense to me to just have a pool of five for license type six, seven, and eight combined, but either way, I don't feel strongly.
It's fine to me.
And just for clarification, and then one additional distribution only?
Yeah, for type 11?
Mm-hmm. So, if they were located in the same geography, that's six, right?
That sounds fine.
Okay.
Yeah, I mean, I'm still not clear on the rationale for limiting to one type 11, but, yeah, we can always open it up later.
And they, they could, yeah, and again, it was really just trying to allow, to not, to not have to count every joint, just, excuse me, every joint distribution and manufacturing license on there. We certainly could increase, we could increase any of the caps if the commission was so inclined, but we could also just reword it where there's a total of six among all four of those licensing categories, and if there's a joint distribution and manufacturing license, that doesn't count against the cap if it's at one premise.
Yeah. I'd be fine with that, too. Six locations among these license types.
Six, seven, eight, and 11? What's that? We have missed some things. I can tell off of my list, but they helped me organize. And then I do want to give another chance to the public this week. Okay, so that's it of that. We didn't discuss yet the caregiver plant, so I can go to that piece, if I can find it. Someone finds it for us, I can let me know.
Well, I think it's on page 53, or maybe it's the whole thing starting on page 51. Or is the qualified caregiver and adult-use personal all in the same section?
They are separate, so the, they're both under 17.42.070 personal cultivation, but then the, what I called non-commercial or adult-use, non-medical, is pulled out separately than the caregiver, which starts on page 51, item C. And I guess I would insert here that there's still the caveat that the city attorney provided, which was that the, all of the various sets of statutes don't necessarily align to be very clear about what the city's purview is, but in absence of something that specifically says we can or cannot do X, Y, and Z, the attorneys are saying you, you could basically do anything from a ban all the way up to an outdoor grow for up to five patients. So, it could be that as statutes get refined as we go on, that we, that all the cities receive some different opinion on that, but that's where we are right now.
So, so the statutes are clear that we can't restrict the six-plant adult-use grow, but they're unclear on whether we could restrict the caregiver growth?
Correct. So when the adult, when Prop 64 came through, it was very clear that they were allowed. So then the medical was, the medical regulations were written before Prop 64 and the six plants, so they've sort of been appended throughout various statutes at this point.
Okay. Well, what do you guys think on that? If we get an opinion on the number of plants?
What's our, what's our current language about medical cultivation?
We don't currently allow it at all. There is a practical side that the chief can address, which is, in practice, there has been a, there's, what's legal and what the county resources will be put to prosecuting something, so by default, there have been medicinal... So by default, there have been medicinal outdoor grows located in the city with recommendations, with doctor recommendations.
Okay, and, and there may well be indoor grows, we just don't know. Okay.
I mean, I don't, go ahead. Move on. You don't really have anything caregiver right now? Okay.
No, I mean, I don't, I don't have an objection to the draft as it stands, which would allow the indoor primary caregiver grow.
To grow up to five patients?
So, I mean, 10A says cultivation should be limited at 30 mature plants, three pounds processed, regardless of how many qualified patients or primary caregivers reside in the parcel. Did, did you mean six per license up to 30, or just you can grow 30?
It's a limit of 30, so in other words, if there were two adults in the household that both act as primary caregivers, that doesn't mean you can do 60 plants if each of you are acting in that capacity. It means regardless of the circumstances, 30 is the limit. So it assumes there's only one primary caregiver.
But I thought the way caregiver growing worked was you were growing, you had to have like enough people's licenses participating in your, I'm not, I'm not sure. And so, so is the 30, like, can any caregiver, even if they're a caregiver for one person, grow 30 plants? Or do they need the six, the five licenses to grow 30?
They would need five licenses to grow 30. So the, the trailer bill eliminated, oh gosh, I'm drawing a blank on the word, but the co-ops, it still allows for individual primary caregivers growing for qualified patients, but it eliminated the co-op concept. So the options now are either commercial cultivation or, or purchasing from a commercial cultivator, or having a primary caregiver grow for you if you're a patient.
Or grow your own.
Or grow your own.
Chief, do you want to add something?
Yeah, I would like to add that, you know, I talked about the, the six plants times three crops a year, you know, 18, 20 plants. So just keep in mind, if this was allowed in a neighborhood with three crops a year, you're looking at 100 plants at somebody's household in Cotati in a neighborhood, and I wouldn't recommend it.
Is this lang, the draft language similar to what Santa Rosa and Cloverdale are doing?
It is very similar to what Cloverdale is doing. I would add that Cloverdale also is allowing outdoor cultivation, so, and the smaller permit levels, so they theoretically could have primary givers in a, like a community garden setting, I'll call it. And with Santa Rosa, again, I apologize, I don't, don't know what they're doing with this particular issue, and I could certainly clarify that before council.
That's fine.
So I think what I want to do now, before we talk, I know we still have, I think we just have fees to talk about, wait, let me check my, let me check my first list. Oh, we didn't talk about business park separation, did we?
No, we didn't talk about it.
Okay, let's talk about that, and then we'll do public comment, and then we'll go back and talk about fees, because that's other stuff. Let's talk about business. Can you give us a refresher on what you need from us, in particular around manufacturing and business park separation?
Really just whether you felt that the, I think one of the speakers suggested 1,000 feet between dispensaries, the regulations say 600 feet between, so just some input on that, if you're so inclined, if you have an opinion about it. And then the other, personally, I think the others are fairly straightforward, 600 feet from schools and youth centers and libraries and that kind of thing. I don't, the 600 feet comes directly from the state regulations, and they seem still appropriate for us, especially given the zoning. So I think the only one that might be up for discussion, if you choose, is the, is 1,000 feet between the dispensaries better than 600.
Thank you for the reminder.
And you said you didn't include a spacing requirement for the manufacturing and distributing operations?
They, they have distance locations from the youth-oriented facilities and from residential, but not among the various, from each other.
From each other, yeah.
Correct.
I'm fine with all those distances as they stand.
As they stand?
Yeah, as they are in the, in the draft.
Not including the proposed by the public to add the 1,000 square foot between the businesses?
Oh, was that one of the public comment? Sorry, I lost that slide in my head now.
That's okay.
No, I'm, I'm, I think 600 feet between the two dispensaries is fine. That, that was the comment? That was the one that somebody wanted to make a thousand?
Yeah, that's the one I want to make a thousand. Okay.
I'm good with that.
As it is?
Yeah.
Okay. Okay, I'm taking the time now to open it up again for another round of public comment, so I'll do that now. Thank you.
Thank you again. It really is fantastic to have a second go-around. It's so hard to sit in the public and think of all those things I wanted to say and you think, so I really appreciate it.
Of course.
To speed through this here, there, historically speaking, you know, the old city, the old rules for the 10 jurisdictions in Sonoma County, Sonoma County has allowed dispensaries, Sebastopol, Cotati, and Santa Rosa for quite some time. New ones, Hillsburg's looking at it in the beginning of the year, Sonoma has just started exploring their regs a couple weeks ago, Petaluma exploring in Cloverdale, of course, has, has been mentioned. Ronard Park and Windsor have very clearly said they don't want any of it, and they're, they're not touching it. Ukiah is wrestling with the same issue. Their planning commission just last week looked at this issue on Wednesday. Sebastopol's planning commission looked at it last week as well. They're struggling, looking at the outdoor cultivation, they're looking at the onsite consumption issues, so you, you are in good company. Sebastopol allows outdoor, Cloverdale allows outdoor, Petaluma allows, I believe, limited. They cut it from 30 plants and 100 square feet about four years ago to, I think it's three plants, and Hillsburg, I believe, cut it down to five plants. Santa Rosa has decided on indoor. So, you know, it really is, I, I do respect your concerns, chief, and greatly, and feel similarly, that safety is, is paramount and important. The only argument I have for outdoor, from a safety perspective, is I'd rather somebody take it from a yard and go than break into a house, which I think they're more inclined to do if it's indoor, and our hands are tied in that six plants are allowed. I'm going to leave that, just like the 1,000-foot setback to the side, and address some other issues, because there are a number of them. Smoking, so perhaps smoking isn't allowed, but vaporizing could be allowed, or eating the product. Sebastopol's looking at this right now. Their planning commission just debated this when they looked at it a week and a half ago. And, you know, what's to be considered is, do you create a new entity that then is selling product? Is that like a dispensary, kind of? Or do you allow the existing dispensary that's already selling products to be the ones that you're regulating as far as allowing for that consumption to take place, and it's part of a dispensary permit? I think they're leaning more towards a dispensary permit tied model in Sebastopol for consumption. Perhaps it is a separate permit. Certainly it needs, you know, to fall within the smoking ordinance and other considerations. Again, I would encourage you to, you know, kind of stretch through it. We're all stretching through this. I think the pool of six for type, license type six, seven, and eight are fine and make sense, and, you know, short of that, I, again, I just, I really thank you for opening this back up and moving through this and for your staff's hard work.
Can I ask another question?
Can we ask you a question?
Yeah. So, has the, has the state not considered onsite consumption license? You know, in, in the alcohol world, those are completely different licenses at the state level.
They, as I understand it, they do allow it, but they defer to local jurisdictions. There's also the capacity for one-time-use permits, so like the Emerald Cup that they have in Santa Rosa, for example, they can allow that sort of permit. The county, I believe, has decided that they don't want to issue any of those permits. Santa Rosa oversees the county fairgrounds and has decided that they're okay with it.
Thanks.
You're welcome.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Anyone else?
Hello again. I'll make it quick. Onsite smoking is actually allowed for tobacco uses in cigar lounges and tobacco shops, dedicated areas. Some of them have enclosed dedicated smoking areas separate from staff, protecting staff from secondhand smoke. Like Craig said, we can do other methods of consumption. And then they do allow for onsite cannabis consumption in other cities right now. Actively, San Francisco just opened up a dispensary that allows for onsite consumption. I'm not exactly aware of the other one, but I know Oakland's considering it as well. So that's all I had to say about that. Thank you.
Thank you.
And if it's helpful, I should clarify that definitely there are things like cigar lounges, et cetera, that are allowed. We just don't allow them here. That's probably what I should have said.
Okay. Any other comments? Any other questions for the public? No? Okay, I'll go ahead and close public comment. Thank you. Okay. We're all getting a little education tonight, that's good. Some reminders. Okay, so, let's see, what am I looking back to? I guess let's, go ahead.
Can I ask a staff question about the onsite consumption? So our current regulations have a mechanism to allow onsite consumption, is that right? Is that what I?
Our current dispensary regulations do not allow for onsite consumption. They-
So, so that item that was on page 47, the number nine, I thought you said that was left over from our current regulations. That's not right? That's the one that talks about if you have a condition of approval?
The other one on page 49 is from our existing ordinance, where it's in the context of signage that's required to be posted, says-
Yeah, okay.
-in the language, and that ordinance doesn't. And so, in developing the new ones, the new regulations, the language that's on page 47, it certainly is something that some jurisdictions, I don't know that any of the local ones are, I would be happy to check into that. It's just one of the things that's out there that could be allowed, that I should have tightened this language up so that it didn't appear that both could be done, because the intent was that it not be allowed onsite. So again, just, that doesn't mean we can't allow it, it's just wasn't staff's recommendation.
So I would, in, in the interests of not trying to do everything at once, I would, I would be comfortable leaving it at no onsite consumption for now, and we can revisit that at some later date, but I feel like that's, it feels to me like that's an area where the state regulations are-
Needed.
-underdone, and it doesn't feel like a simple add-on to a dispensary to me.
Okay, yeah. I think I, I think I have to agree. I mean, I think we're, I think we're progressing in this, in this world, but we're just not quite there, yeah, for, for that, for onsite use.
So I think this is just, we're recommending this to the, to the council.
Yeah, this is-
And so, I mean, I, I certainly would feel comfortable recommending, I would personally feel recommending that it could be considered in some fashion or the other. I mean, I never, myself, actually been down that route or taken any of them. I'm not a, I've not been a user at all on this, but I would feel comfortable within the setting that it be managed, but I would leave it up to the council and also the chief if he thinks it's safe personally. I think people are buying a product and, you know, being able to test some of that product, but it, it's a complex area, so given, given health or other things. But I don't think we're deciding it, I think we're just voicing some, some opinions and stuff.
Okay. You want to talk about the caregiver plants again?
Can I, can I?
Oh, sorry, yeah, I apologize, I missed you.
Yeah, oh, there we go.
So Commissioner Ford mentioned something about alcohol and how it is regulated, and there are rules for alcohol, aside from, you know, certain businesses, and you're, you're correct. And so where we're at with cannabis is, so part of Prop 64 legislation is the governor's committed funds for research on cannabis related to DUI, and we're not there yet. Those, those regulations are not there yet, what the cannabinoid levels are to not drink and drive, we know that alcohol's point 08, we don't know what cannabis is yet. Also, our bars, our bartenders and people who serve alcohol even in restaurants receive California-certified responsible beverage service training, and the cannabis industry is just not at the level of alcohol at this time. I'm not saying it's something that, you know, I would say never consider, but I don't think it should be considered at this time, it's just too early in the game.
Okay, thank you.
And I'm, I'm feel comfortable being swayed by the chief on that, and, I mean, we're not recommending anything, but I, I certainly, we're recommending it, so I would go along with that view and-
Okay. And then just to get back to the caregivers, I mean, it just, does seem like an awful lot. I mean, are you fine with the recommendation as is for council decide, or?
So, remind me what the commercial grow terms are in here? Because it seems to me like perhaps we could limit caregiver grows somewhat if, now that a, are we allowing commercial grows at all? I forget.
So long ago, I've lost you.
I should have taken a break, I'm sorry.
Yeah, that, well, that is a good question, because the, the way it's structured right now, it would be a full-on business owner, because they would have to have at least 5,000 square feet of cultivation area, indoor cultivation, so it, there's a significant investment required there to get going, so it's not something anybody could do in-
I see.
-a short amount of time, so, yeah, so that, so the options are, again, grow your own six plants, be primary caregiver with some, or jump to buying it from a retail provider within our schema. Of course, that doesn't, people could get it from other sites outside Cotati, but staying here in Cotati, there is a jump between personal and then up to commercial.
Page 52 is in topic.
Mm-hmm.
Have you done any analysis of what land is available, once you have the 600-foot border from any school or daycare?
For what's constructed now, actually, we don't trigger any of those because of where, the way the business park is situated.
But I'm talking about the primary caregiver grow. That's not restricted to the, to the business park, is it?
Oh, no, but the, those grows could happen on any residential property. Yeah, so perhaps I didn't understand your previous question. The difference between the personal cultivation and the primary caregiver cultivation is that those are allowed on any residential property and not on any commercially zoned property.
But, but ten D on page fifty-two says no cultivation. This is under the personal and qualified caregiver grow, says you can't be within 600 feet of a school or daycare. So not in residential. So that's what I'm asking. How much of a worry are we talking about having these grows in a neighborhood? So how many residential areas are there outside of 600 feet from a school or daycare?
We would have to do some analysis of that because the way, the way it's proposed, any home daycare would qualify.
Right.
Well, on that also says ten C. It's only RR, RBL. There's a restriction anyway. It's not going to be high-density areas.
Right, well, it's all single-family home zoning, right?
The neighborhood medium and the PUD could be, the PUD, for example, could be Village Walk, could be the newer development that's right on the creek at East Cattati. Those are both PUDs. Neighborhood medium could be the communities on Breen Way. Those are in that density range, Ryan Lane.
And why are you restricting it to only detached, single-family rather than, I mean...
That one is just cultivation of cannabis in detached structures. So it's limited to those. So if you live in a duplex, you can't grow it in an outbuilding. You can still grow it in your, in your home.
Right, so why is that being limited?
The reason behind that is just if you've got multiple tenants, if you didn't limit it, each one of them could theoretically have an accessory structure on the property. So say you had condominiums and they're, they were patio homes and only had one common grass area. If you're not limiting the outdoor locations, then each one of those six or how many ever detached units could have an accessory structure cultivating cannabis.
Can't you just define it that there'd only be one accessory structure per land, whatever? Because it's one ownership for that piece of land. I mean, I'm just thinking my property, I'm a duplex and I have an outdoor straw bale building that would meet all those requirements. Not that I have any plans, but, but it would be, under this, it wouldn't be allowed. But I mean, I'm, I'm not, I'm just saying that from this point of view, this ordinance, it...
There is a slight distinction between single-family homes and accessory dwelling units that again, puts a further wrinkle into the lack of clarity at the state level. So on the one hand, you could view it that that is a primary residence with an accessory use. The challenge becomes that it's an accessory dwelling use. So are they both entitled to the primary caregiver status? And again, it's just not clear yet. And that, that is slightly different than having a development like Village Walk if we just assumed the townhouses that have no outdoor space. They have porches, but there's no outdoor growing space. They have the park. In that case, that has a public use easement over it. But take that same type of development, that that was a private tot lot, and it's all mutually owned or common ownership. You get into that issue of if that is their common open space versus someone's private lot, is each owner entitled to having a detached structure with up to thirty plants in it?
I mean, I think it's complicated, but I'm reasonably comfortable with that. I mean, I, I think we drive too much by the, we've forced too many problems in the urban areas with all the single-family dwelling sort of emphasis. But I don't think this is the place for that. So I'm, I'm comfortable with the wording as a first pass. I mean, it's better than not allowing it at all. It's allowing it in certain circumstances and saying that there's got to be some responsible negotiation that goes on or somebody can't just, somebody's got to think about it a little bit. That's really what it amounts to.
And you're so comfortable with the number?
I, well, I mean, I hear what the chief is saying, but I, and I don't know where that number's come from. But it's just, that's a peak, that somebody can't go beyond that.
Can't exceed it, sure. Okay. Thank you.
Yeah, so, so we currently don't allow caregiver grows at all, is my understanding?
Correct.
And I'm, I'm leery about establishing some ordinance that is not clear whether it's consistent with state law or not. I don't want to put the city in the position of trying to defend a ordinance that turns out to be contrary to state law. So obviously, it'd be nice if the lawyers would figure this out. But the, you know, thirty, thirty plants with three crops a year does sound like an awful lot for personal use, but I don't know the quantities that people use. And my hope is that as adult-use marijuana becomes available and commercial grows are possible, that there's less pressure to do illegal, non-personal-use caregiver, caregiver grows under, under medical marijuana provisions. So I'm a little, I'm a little less worried about the thirty-plant possibility if there's commercial marijuana becoming available at the same time. And it feels like with a dispensary in town where medical or presumably adult-use marijuana's going to be available, there would be hopefully less pressure to, to do illegal, illegal, non-personal-use grows under medical marijuana rules. So I'm comfortable leaving it at the thirty plants for now. If we start to have trouble, then we would have to limit that, I think. But I, I'm more comfortable leaving it at thirty and seeing how the law shakes out statewide.
Okay. I think that's a good point about what the attorney said and setting up the city to, how to defend against that. That's a good point.
Okay. If it's helpful at all, the group of attorneys had the same response that Commissioner Ford just did, that they think if anything, the issue will go away over time because generally, medical and recreational cannabis will be more available.
Yeah, agreed. Okay. Okay, I think, agreed. All, okay. Apparently already decided that. I think that's it.
Can I ask one question about the personal grow issue? So state law says we have to allow six, six plants, personal adult-use grow, right? But it, it does allow us to, to require an administrative permit for that?
Yeah, the language is something about enact reasonable regulations to allow for it.
So if I remember this slide right, it was a long time ago. The, it feels to me like fire police and plant, fire police and building or fire police and planning inspections for growing six large houseplants is a little excessive. And I'm not clear that all those inspections are really necessary. I don't mind the inspections, but, but the grower will have to pay for them, and that seems a little onerous to me.
Are you trying to segue us into fees?
Well, yeah, I saw your notes and so...
Thank you, Commissioner Ford.
The fees, fees issue brought that to mind. It just feels, I mean, I get it that it's not the same as my chiflera, but in some ways, it's not that different, so...
I had a question about that too, actually. So just the, I guess the general like permitting process around that? So the purpose also, I guess, behind that is like the educational piece you had mentioned around that? Could you tell me just a little bit more about that? If, I don't know if that has really been formed yet, but just like about what that is?
Sure. It would be a dialed-down version of the one that was attached to the packet, which was more for commercial grows. And yes, from a planning perspective, I see it more as an educational tool akin to our no-fee fence permit and even our tree permit, which costs $20. They're not meant to even account for all of the staff time. They're just meant to be there so that someone asks the question so that you can tell them how the regulations work. And so certainly an option to inspections, which we don't, we do not inspect fee permits. We certainly inspect the tree removal process, but we don't inspect tree permits. That's a, they come in, tell us what they're doing on a plot, a simple plot diagram, and we give them the regulations and sign the permit and they go out the door. There's certainly that option available as well, where we develop the materials that's attached to the permit and says, great, here's what you're required to do. Thanks for coming in. The, the other aspects of it is that unlike the commercial grows, come January first, anybody could begin growing those six plants. And so we will need to do some kind of public outreach, Nixle, Facebook, et cetera, that lets people know that outdoor grows, for example, may not be allowed if the current regulations stay. So just, yes, you are entitled to do it. Here are the ways that you need to do it in Cattati.
Can I suggest that, it seems to me that a, that a personal grow or, or a patient grow, so qualified patient, yeah, personal, personal adult-use grow or qualified patient grow could be an over-the-counter permit like a tree permit. And, and a qualified caregiver grow, I would be comfortable with requiring the inspections for that. So if you're going to go over the six plants, six mature plants, then you need a somewhat, you know, it would still be administrative permit, but the fee, the way you put it in the PowerPoint is fees enough to cover the review and inspections. And you actually list all four inspections, police, fire, building, and planning. I'm still not sure all four of those are needed. You can work that out. But I'd be comfortable requiring somewhat a higher bar for qualified caregiver grow than for the personal grow.
I like that. What, can you tell us the need for police, fire, building, and planning? Let's get over to the six.
Yeah, and it would be a joint inspection. We wouldn't charge for each one separately. But police, just to look at site conditions and the way that the property is situated and how accessible it might be from the backyard fencing. Planning looks at it for setbacks as well as other things like lock coverage. Building and fire would primarily be looking at where are you doing it? Has the electrical panel been upgraded? Is there fire suppression equipment nearby in case something happens? So it would be the basic code compliance aspects of it.
So with planning, it sounds like you're talking about assuming an accessory structure or perhaps a new accessory structure? Like if somebody's growing in their living room, there's no setback concerns or anything like that?
Right, it's a little bit of a wash. If they're growing inside, it's not a concern for fire, but, excuse me, for planning, but it's a bigger concern for building and fire.
How did you feel about?
I'm, I'm, I'm good with that. I mean, what did we say? That the each plant would be, what was the radius for each plant?
They say depending on the maturity rate and the strain, anywhere between one and fifteen. So when I've been doing rough calculations, I just assume ten square feet per plant.
Yeah, they've turned it as ten square feet and you've got thirty. You've got 300 square feet, which is a small building. So, and you could probably even fit a small building under some of the requirements. I mean, what's our requirement for a building structure?
Well, the way these are structured, they are limited to 120 square feet.
So 120 square feet is somebody which would, which would limit the size if they wanted to do it at a low cost to get started. I mean, I think there's, there's always that. They could do something, probably buy something fairly easy. And then, but with the permit, the permit would still require that they be electrical, for instance, be to grade and, and stuff, and just the advice and knowledge. So I, I think it's a reasonable...
Change in that?
Right, reasonable to require.
That, that is another good point, that if you're 120 square feet or under, you're not required to get a building permit. But certainly if you're running electrical and plumbing to it, you need permits. So there is that mechanism for the smaller ones.
Yeah. Okay. Good. I like that better. That was sticking out to me when I read my packet, so makes me happier. Okay. I think we did it. Did we get it? I got it on my list, but that's not saying much. As we know, I missed some tonight. Thank you for your patience. I'm a little rusty in vice, so filling in. Was that okay?
Yes, thank you for your service tonight as chair. Yes, I, we've gotten everything that was on our radar, plus some really good input to refine. So I think we're good.
Okay. That's it, right, on this piece?
You can go on, I think.
Okay. Any reports by staff?
All right, thanks very much. Just a couple of quick things. I think everyone, all the commissioners saw my email about that we will, we will be rescheduling the Bike to Work discussion shortly. Hopefully, that'll happen in November. We're also going to be scheduling the city engineer to give us an update on projects and issues. So we'll, at a minimum, combine those two into a meeting so that those happen in November. And then finally, just to let you all know that the Cattati Station project did go to DRC on the 21st, and they were approved with a couple of design modifications that the committee found. So that project, I know they're moving forward on their improvement plans. And so we're expecting we'll get building plans and medals on that sometime October, November. And we also had a visit from a firm that has, is in due diligence period to buy the Kessing Ranch map. So that one will likely be moving forward to final design review maybe in the next three, four months.
Where was that?
The last one is, they call Kessing, we call 100 Valparaiso. So I, I think that's it for now. We, we will likely soon have some updates on the climate action plan as that's kind of shaken out from the lawsuit that the county, that the RCPA received. So we'll, can give you an update on that soon.
Great.
Thank you.
Thank you. Any reports by commissioners? Thank you for being here tonight with me.
Well done for...
Thank you for, for stepping in as chair.
Oh, of course, yeah. I have been riding Smart, and that's been going great. Obviously, I'm using the Cattati station, and it's been fantastic. Yeah, great feedback for our, our station and our parking lot. They love that it's a free parking lot as well. So I noticed once that word got out, the parking lot got a little busier, so, but it's going well.
So you've used it for commuting?
Yeah, I use it for commuting. If I don't have off-site meetings, then I, I take Smart.
Where do you go to?
I go to the Civic Center, yeah, station, and then I take a shuttle to work. Yeah, I work for the county, so they offer me a shuttle service, which is great. Yeah. Yeah. That's it. Well, thank you. Thank you for filling in as well this evening. Yeah, all right, meeting adjourned. Thank you.